A- Avon Town Council Meeting to Order. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Julie, please.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Present.
Robert Pope.
Present.
Aaron Tivawal.
Present.
Don Loudon.
Present.
Greg Susan.
Present. We're gonna go ahead and do the NOVA Award Presentation first. Ian.
Hi, I'm Ian. I'm the Senior Planner for the Town of Avon. I'm here covering for Jared to present tonight's Avon NOVA Award. To start off the new year of 2022, the Town of Avon is proud to present our first Avon NOVA Award to a resident that has shown that taking care of others is what matters most. And the fun part is that he doesn't know he's receiving this tonight. Before I share his name, I'd like to share about who he is and why he was nominated. Growing up in Crawfordsville, this Avon resident served in the United States Air Force for six years while earning two bachelor degrees. He's an avid car enthusiast, a hard worker currently working at Forest Logistics as a branch manager, and he's enjoyed coaching softball in Avon for many years. He and his wife Dana live here in Avon while raising their twin daughters, Brianna and Michaela. "Spreading kindness throughout Avon" is a quote that sums him up. Paying for elderly people and retired veterans meals when he's dining out, giving well-deserved gratuity to waiters, waitresses, cashiers, stockmen, or anyone he comes across are just a few elements that he enjoys being able to do for others. You know those lemonade stands that kids put up around town? Well, not only does he stop by those, but it's not uncommon for him to slip them a 20 for just a single glass. His sister Stacy submitted his nomination, and to take a quote from her submission, "Michael is humble, and he would never attend today if he knew he was receiving this award." And Avon is a better place to live in with people like him, and we couldn't agree more. So, Julie, if you could bring the award up. Michael, thank you for shining bright. Thank you for thinking of others first. Thank you for serving this country and supporting others that have as well, and thank you for all you have done, all you do, and all you will do. On the behalf of the entire Town of Avon, we present this award and certificate to our January 2022 Avon NOVA Award winner, Michael Query. Now, Michael, we're gonna take a picture together. We're gonna have a slight recess after we swear in the new officers, so have you just wait around?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ian. Thank you, Michael. Give us just a few minutes. Let us swear these officers in. We'll take a recess and get some pictures with you. Next item, swearing in of our new officers. Chief Stoops.
Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. Some of you have been to these before. They're, if you have, then you understand that they're, it's a very special moment, not just for our department and our town, but it's also a special moment for some new officers that are joining our department this evening. I'd like to introduce each of them to you tonight. The first one I'd like to introduce is Sawyer Donovan. Sawyer, if you can kinda come on up here, and so everybody can stare at you. Sawyer graduated high school from Cascade High School in 2015. He graduated from the Wabash College with the bachelor's degree in rhetoric in 2019. He completed an internship with Best Buddies of Indiana. For those of you that's not real familiar with that, they do help a lot with the developmentally disabled and challenged. My oldest daughter was part of that as well, so that's a really good program, and we're proud to see that he was a part of that. Sawyer's also worked for TMC Transportation in Brownsburg, and most recently, he was also a substitute teacher for the Plainfield Community School Corporation. He's also worked as a project manager for an electrical company, and he was pretty much born and raised here almost his entire life with his family and his mom and dad, who I believe, I've been here this evening for you. There they are. They're here as well. They're both educators and educational administrators for schools in our community, and he's also joined here this evening with his wife Emma, who is also a teacher. His long-term law enforcement goals include becoming a field training officer someday, earning a position with the ERT, which is the Emergency Response Team, as well as possibly joining the Narcotics Interdiction Team. So, we would like to welcome him and his family to the Town of Avon and to the Avon Police Department. Next, I'd like to introduce Kevin Kasperzick. Kevin, you wanna come on up? For those of you that do not know, we also have his brother on our department, Steve Kasperzick. So, this is our first brother-dynamic duo on the Avon Police Department, so we're excited to have him aboard as well. Kevin's 23 years old. He also kinda hails here from the area of Chicago and that area, just like Steve did. He's a graduate from the Notre Dame College Prep High School in 2017. He graduated from Illinois State University in 2021 with the Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice and a minor in Sociology. He completed an internship with Highland Park Police Department, who I understand they wanted him pretty bad, but he just, his brother talked him into coming down here. He served as a security officer with the Illinois State University for a couple of years during college. He's also a DPS and a groundskeeper for Niles Park in Illinois, so when we have a parks issue here, maybe he can take care of that and help mow the grass. His law enforcement goals include becoming a detective, and he stated that he spent a lot of time with the detectives during his internship and really enjoyed all the follow-up investigation and seeing the more in-depth cases come to an end. He'll have an opportunity to reevaluate that over the next couple of years, see if he still has that interest. Next, I'd like to also introduce our judge this evening who's going to be administering the oath. It's Judge Rhett Stewart of Superior Court II for Hendricks County. He's been a judge for, what?
Eight years.
Eight years now. So, we welcome him, and I'm gonna turn this over to Judge Stewart to say a few words and administer the oath.
Thank you. I try to keep these things short, because I don't want to see an old wall back there. I always, I have a buzz in the seats, it is. Sit here all here and see, where's my back there? Hey, I got some country time in the car. I'll sell you a bottle. I wanna go way higher than that. Thanks all for having, thank the chief for having me over. This is one of the great things I did to do, to pay to have things. I will keep this short, like I said. I want to give you guys a couple pieces of advice, three good pieces of advice. One, one, always come home with your health every night, okay? Come home healthy. There are dangers, God will be watching you to be healthy. Remember that. Two, come home with your integrity. None of these people you've got around, you've subsequently taught, so you, there's nothing you're gonna deal with out there that you haven't already dealt with. God bless you. I subsequently taught one day, and they asked me not to come back. Nothing that any of those people do out there is worth your integrity, your honesty. You know what I mean? If they're that bad, you'll catch them, you'll get them, okay? Just remember to go home every day with your health and your honesty and integrity intact. The third piece of advice I'll give you, and I'm not allowed to, because I wear this thing, I'm not allowed to give endorsements and things like that, but if you'll listen to that guy right there, and that guy right there, there couldn't be two finer people for you to train with and learn from than them right there. In my opinion, they're two of the finest that ever put on a uniform. So, listen to them, do what they ask you to do. Everything else will take care of itself, okay? You ready to do this? All right, which one we got first? Oh, the hard name. All right, you ready? How'd you know it was you? You just guessed? Okay, can I just please raise up your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name. Do solemnly swear. That I will defend the Constitution of the United States of America. The State of Indiana. And that I will faithfully perform. My duties as a law enforcement officer. Of the Avon Police Department. Partially. Fairly. And to the best of my ability. I affirm that I will enforce all ordinances and laws. And follow all legal directives. And policies prescribed. By the Avon Police Department. So help me God. Congratulations.
Young man, come on. You graduated from Cascade in 2015.
Yes, sir.
Wearing socks that are older than that.
I state your name.
I, Sawyer Donovan.
Do solemnly swear. That I will defend the Constitution of the United States of America. And the State of Indiana. And that I will faithfully perform my duties. As a law enforcement officer. Of the Avon Police Department. Impartially. Fairly. And to the best of my ability. I affirm that I will enforce all ordinances and laws. And follow all legal directives. And policies. Prescribed by the Avon Police Department. So help me God. Congratulations, Ian.
What we'd like to do now is, they each have chosen someone to pin their badge on them to start their career, and so. And there they are.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess so we can get some pictures. Call a meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any discussion? Entertained a motion?
May we approve the consent agenda as presented?
We have a first and a second. Julie, will you take roll call, please?
Greg Susan.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Aaron Tivawal.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Next item is the first of two public comment sections. The public may comment items on the, comment items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing or a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come up to the mic, state your name and address. You have three minutes. Seeing no one come up, we'll close that section of public comment. Moving on to council comment and liaison reports. Ms. Loudon, I'll start over you with you.
Yesterday, we had our first council conversation that took place at Cabin Coffee from 9:30 to 10:30. That was attended by Ryan, Jared, Robert, and myself. We had about 12 citizens that came out, so not bad for the first time. Got good questions asked, was able to answer all of their questions, and looking forward to the future ones. And one of the questions was, is that the only one we're going to do? And the answer to that is no. We're going to rotate the times that everyone's meeting. We'll rotate through the entire council and the different members of the staff, and we'll do it at different locations.
Mr. Tivawal.
Thank you. The RDA and RDC met on Monday, the 17th. The RDA approved, or voted for officers, approved claims. RDC did the same and approved engineering design for the roundabout at 900 and Charles Nelson. Parks meets on February 2nd at 7 o'clock.
Mr. Susan.
Well, I had a number of things going on. On the 14th, I was, listened to the Avon Chamber of Commerce as well as other Hendricks County chambers with their legislative update. Within that, I did submit a question regarding House Bill 1022, and they did indicate that that bill would probably not be heard this session. That is the one for annexation, that if we're 80% contiguous, that, that, that annexation process would be shortened, and, but Jeff Thompson just indicated he wanted to get it out there, get it on the agenda, make people aware of it, and hopefully the next session, we may have a chance to get that up through. I also met with a local attorney about an issue that we're gonna probably talk about in our work session. I did attend the school building input session last week. Attended the library board meeting on Monday, chamber luncheon on Tuesday, economic development meeting on Wednesday, EDC meeting on Thursday, signed annexation letters Thursday, and attended the Leadership Hendricks County Annual Meeting tonight before I came here, so.
Been a little busy.
I'm gonna put in for a pay raise.
Mr. Eisenbarth.
So, you're saying you have free time available, because I mean, you know, we got right now.
I just honored my commitment, Steve.
Similar, we, yes, leadership, all of us, you know, were here just before the meeting, and I thought that was great, just to be able to see people. That was great. Also, the Transportation Committee meeting with the township, we met this week too. John Taylor and then Steve Moore and I met with Britt from the township, and we're really talking about some things that I think, I'm hoping it's gonna get some traction about extending Plainfield's bus service possibly up to the north. In other words, it stops at 200 South and now coming further north, thanks to Ryan, because Ryan kinda suggested maybe it'd be good to think on those things. So, we're looking at that. We're gonna be, I've gotten a message into Scott down at the Plainfield Transportation, and we'll see how that goes. Plan Commission, many of you, I'm sure, already heard, Easton Gray moved along just fine, and from what I heard from one, our new Plan Commission member, he really liked that everyone listened to his comments about making access points. So, it's, it's great when people get validated. They serve on the committees and they get validated, and it just kinda encourages other people to wanna serve. So, I thought that was a huge success. So, I think that's probably it. That's all I got.
Thanks, Steve. I just wanna definitely double up on what Dawn mentioned about the council conversation. I think, I just, I think it was a real success. I know it's something that for us, it seems intimidating and admitted, it absolutely was beforehand afterwards. It was great. I think you guys, when it comes to your turn, I think, I think you guys are gonna have a great experience. ACEDP Board Meeting, we had yesterday. Essentially, it was just sharing updates on the Ready Grant, working through that process with, with sharing out those, those Ready Grant dollars. Went to, I think, Tuesday's High School Expansion Meeting as well, the second one that Greg was referring to. Some good information coming from that about expanding the school's capability to move up to 4,000 students. And then, just wanted to make it, make it known to you guys that I did reappoint Sean, Dave, and Brian to their positions. So, I don't think we, we did that last time. It was more or less just paperwork, as I understand, but just wanted to make you guys all aware. And that is it for me. Move on to new business. We have a quote for wildflower planting. Ryan?
Yeah, the Parks Department has been working, and I know we've had some discussions and shared with the council that there were some locations in the park that maybe were hazardous to be Boeing, and that we wanted to look at other ways to kind of address those areas. And three in particular, we really had, two of them were kinda smaller areas. One, we've rip-wrapped. The other one is getting wildflowers, but it was a small area, so it was below the threshold that I could approve. But this area in particular is a pretty large area. This is the area actually around the lake. I know I've talked to a couple of you already, and the original intent, when we actually did, the area around the lake was for it to actually have prairie and wildflowers coming up the slopes. But the way the construction actually worked out was, we had to temporarily seed it. So, we seeded it. It actually came up really well, and it was green, and it was nice. So, we kinda said, okay, let's just leave it that way. But it's always been, presented itself as a challenge to mow, just going around at that slope. It's dangerous for our employees, and so it makes sense for us to do something there. So, the park staff and Gary went out and got quotes. Williams Creek has, has kinda long been doing a lot of the prairies and the, and the natural wildflowers in the park. We did reach out to a couple of other companies. Typically, those companies do like large areas, and so they didn't provide us a quote for the project. So, the only quote we did get was Williams Creek. However, you know, again, we've worked with Williams Creek a lot, and we're comfortable with what they're doing. And so, their quote was for $22,768, and so it is staff's recommendation to approve this. We did have some money left over in food and beverage from the 2021 budget, so we encumbered funds to pay for this, so it would actually come out of last year's food and beverage budget. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions? Any discussion?
Is this going to only then be around the Town Hall Park Lake, or is it going to be over at Summerlot as well?
This is just for around the Town Hall Lake.
Ryan, my only question is, within this, it says this estimate expires 30 days from the date listed above. Well, the date listed above is 16 November 21, and the signature date is July 19th of 21. Doesn't matter which one you pick, it's expired. So, is this quote good or bad?
We did. We verified with Williams Creek that their quote was still good, and asked before we put it on your agenda if, if it was okay, and they said nothing had changed and that they would honor that price, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for wildflowers from Williams Creek as presented. Looks like $22,768. Does that cover it all? I think it does.
Second. We have a first and a second. Julie, would you mind taking a roll call, please?
Don Loudon.
Four.
Aaron Tivawal.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Greg Susan.
Four.